Yeah.
Well, they come right with the good, you know.
I've got a good shirt picker.
Yeah, you're one of the best.
Yeah, yeah.
Your yard is so pretty.
Oh, gosh, yes. The Veronica.
Hmm, has it bloomed like that?
No, it hasn't. Yeah.
Hush.
Yeah.
Gorgeous.
It was a perfect winter for it. Have you seen it?
Yeah.
I'm quite happy with it.
Yeah.
I need to get some, um, prune bought to spread so that the weeds don't.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. It's quite fun.
That's my day. It's beautiful and just perfect.
Yes, it's like a perfect, yeah, and it it only blooms in the spring, but still, and then and the win- and the rest of the year, it's green and so.
It's great.
Yeah, that sounds great. Or I shouldn't say the rest of the summer. In the winter, it turns kind of brown. So it, uh, the bees should be happy about my year. Butterflies and. Yeah.
I was just thinking about what I almost said, there's a bee hive not very far from her house, so they were all going to consider like bird bath and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but our our bird bath, I am surprised by the traffic that our bird bath gets. I mean, we think, you know, birds, but you know, no, it's all the strays. There's a dog that comes by every couple of days to get a drink. I don't know whose dog it is, but.
Well, this is a good old ordinance.
He's very friendly, so I don't mind him. He's not aggressive, so. And then squirrels. Hi, Sam.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good.
This fine day.
Yeah.
You already saw the building, thanks for.
I did.
Excellent. Oh, Jeff, welcome.
How they? How was everybody doing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The perfect timing, yeah.
How are you?
I didn't get.
What's going on?
What's going on? What's going on?
I didn't hear. Fucking you, fucking you. Did you get some new jokes for this year's presentation?
Uh, you know, I've been trying to.
I'm just preparing myself.
Trying to figure out how to incorporate inflation and the whole joke.
Okay, I'm I'm ready for a good laugh.
Yeah, see what I can do.
Okay.
You tell jokes down here?
I try.
Well, why don't you tell them up at the hospital? You're in a mood?
Cause I'm there for like four hours.
Yes, you are.
I'm not, uh, these guys won't let me be here for four hours.
They have two states.
I agree. I know. Yes, I will be there. Well, you know, cause you're kind of always stressed. It'd be easy to forget something when you're that stressed. You have some, you have some people. Well, it's part of having a computer.
Uh, named the four presidents on Mount Rushmore. I asked Ben that. I said, you might be on Jeopardy soon, but you didn't even know. You ripped them off. It was a good trip.
It was a good trip. Girls look like they were so relaxed. They were. Oh, take our picture here. Oh, take our picture here.
That's a hidden gem that not enough people go see.
It is. Yeah, yeah.
At close.
My dad hadn't been there. My parents went with us and he hadn't been there since he was little. He goes, well, this has really changed, cause he said that it was just a gravel parking lot then, you know, at that point when he went, yeah.
We gotta go quick. I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy a motorcycle and go to Sturgis.
I wanna see that.
Nine hundred ninety.
Okay.
Get the bike and bear on the back.
Kristen tight black. I can just see that.
She's a hell of a girl, John.
She's on the motorcycle and you being the sidecar.
I'll find insurance.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, in regard, indivisible, and evergreen. Roll call, Jeff.
Bruggeman. Sims.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
All right, call this meeting to order at seven oh one on this fine Monday evening. Um, just to remind you that the City of Grant is videotaping this, um, council meeting. And also the City of Grant abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display in the meeting room on a little cork board there as required by Nebraska state law. Did everyone get a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
We'll move to set action on the agenda for May twenty second, twenty twenty three.
Can I second that? Okay, second.
All right. Terry moves and stands second to accept action on the May twenty two, twenty twenty three agenda. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried. That's all right. I knew what you were thinking.
Yeah.
Review and action on prior reading minutes for May eighth, twenty twenty three.
We'll move to set action on prior reading minutes for May eighth, twenty twenty three and waive the reading.
I second the, um, May eighth. Right, I can second attention. I second the May eighth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, sorry, meeting minutes and waive the, um, reading. Any discussion? Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
I'm staying.
Lisa, I vote yes. And Phil's due to lack of. And it'll be on the next agenda. All right, communications, that was in the, um, packet. Um, there is a packet on, in the binder for those of you who haven't been to a meeting before. All right, standing committee reports. Sam?
None.
Terry?
None.
All right, thank you. Financials, Jesse?
I wanted to note that we had, um, updated our CDE with Adams Bank and Trust and the interest rate now is four point five, um, maturing in April of twenty twenty four. And then, um, on the airport one, I know we kind of touched base on it the last financial packet that we got the final, um, proceeds on the access road and the payment also included in there for the access road. And, um, Martin Buildings, we had our chunk last month for the materials and the final payment is the building payment, so that project out of course is completed.
All right. Please note that we accept the financial doctors in. Do you have any public comment today?
Yeah, Sam?
If you're able and, um, state your name and you're.
I just, uh, like to thank this council for all the things you've accomplished during these past few years. Uh, I remember we were in here about two or three years ago and I said, we gotta get something done with these, with the curb on the streets. Guys said they're shambles. These these guys here, after blink their eyes, they went beater. They ignore the seven o'clock morning whistle. They ignore the five o'clock whistle. That it looks fantastic.
Thank you.
And thank you for planning to get that done. Thank you for the other wonderful improvements. The park looks great. The swimming pool is a tremendous addition to this town. Uh, it's, we've got a nice park and I know the city puts a lot into that. Uh, we've had kind of a flavor change. Our our housing is improving in this town. We're replacing homes and a lot of people on their own are improving the looks of their house. Grant is looking better all the time. And thank you for the different committees that you put to work on to do all this. I did this thing before I was mayor. I was, um, city council and, oh man, were they brutal to me along with the other people in the council. There's a lot of abuse. You gotta remember that people are just frustrated a lot and so the easiest target is the government. You all start with the federal government, go to state government and city government or back up the other way. You're just gonna take some blasts that aren't necessary, I don't think. And I know the job that you guys have done and I'd say we're on a positive move to the front. And so thank you and thank Andrea and Kim for the job they've done and thank you for the research you've done as mayor.
Thank you.
You've improved that. I see you're, I don't know if you're gonna, thank you guys, administration here, you two and Ed. Uh, I'm an Ed fan though. And, uh, so thank you for that and thank you for keeping Grant moving in the right direction. Uh, these things are, a lot of these things are little things and when you get right down to it, little things aren't that important. I just get up with a grateful heart that I get up again. And, uh, you know, you you got people getting dressed tonight, you getting dressed, your insurance. I I vouch for him. I know he does a good job in his business. He's the chairman of the hospital board, which is a big role if you're not aware of that. And so if I get a vote, I vote yes for him. And I think, uh, Jim Brugan, Brugan, the sheriff's department, we looked in starting City of Grant, police force once. We figured, well, you have to get a minimum of two cars. You have to get a minimum of four people. You're probably gonna double, uh, the expenses that Brugan's kind of sheriff's office declared. And Jim Brugan has helped me a lot in the building, funeral home and just various other things. We appreciate the department. And I think it's a no brainer to go back into contract with him. But thank you for moving us. I think you're as progressive as we've had of any city council. We've had over the previous years here, so keep up the good work and we've got two people at my place that leave totally you folks. So thank you.
You're you're welcome. Thank you so much for.
Anything else?
Giving this is good.
I don't know if I can say them now, it's a little.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? All right.
What can you say?
Thank you, sir. There being no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. Action and discussion on approval agreement at professional services between Mill and Associates Consulting Engineers PC and the City of Grant for the rewrite revision to the City of Grant zoning ordinance and subdivision code also need be authorized to sign. Any questions, Tom? Is this a pretty straightforward, typical or any?
Yeah, there was a really big.
Any concerns?
How does it work there, so?
Okay, and we've worked a lot with Miller and Associates, so I assume it's very similar to.
Yeah.
I read through the proposals even though I wasn't able to be here last time, so, um, I saw that pass, so make it actually approve the agreement, professional services between Miller Associates and the City of Grant for rewriting revisions to the City Grant, um, Grant zoning ordinance and subdivision code. Al, where's Mary's saying?
I second.
Sam moved, Terry second, that we approve the agreement between Miller Associates and the City of Grant. Any discussion? Sam?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carried. Authorizing the mayor to sign, forgot to add that. Action and discussion on interlocal agreement for law enforcement services between Perkins County and the City of Grant. Also, the mayor needs to be authorized to sign this agreement also. I believe there's, um, pretty typical to the last year's with a four percent increase, which I think is very fair. Considering the cost of fuel and insurance and I don't know, what has it gone up?
Yeah, and not, everything's gone up more than that.
Yeah, yeah, everything's gone up. So I I thought four, I was expecting more than that, so I was pretty satisfied with the four percent.
Um, I moved set action on interlocal agreement for law enforcement service between Perkins County and the City of Grant and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Terry moved and Sam second that we accept the interlocal agreement for law enforcement services between Perkins County and the City of Grant, authorizing the mayor to sign. Any discussion? Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
I vote yes also. Motion carried. Okay, this will be the first reading, um, on ordinance number eighteen dash eleven dash zero one. Amending the revised municipal City of Grant or municipal code of the City of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska. And I think Ed highlighted the the change that was made. But if you would go ahead and read that for us, Jesse?
Ordinance number twenty three dash zero five dash zero one and ordinance by the mayor and council of the City of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska. Amending the revised municipal code of the City of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska, ordinance number eighteen dash eleven dash zero one. By adding a new subparagraph D in chapter seven, public utilities, article two, water department, section seven dash two one six. Unsafe connection prohibited, backflow prevention devices required.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that will be on the agenda for the next few evenings. So I'm planning to review that and if you have questions or concerns, um, please bring them to Ed or really, I'm thinking.
Yeah, well, um, we're adding this because of the, when we were, had our annual inspection, they advised us that we needed to get more of that included in our ordinance for the five years because we're not getting all of them returned back and we're gonna maybe have to enforce it stronger at some point.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for the additional information. The next item on the agenda is request to be placed on the agenda submitted by John.
Sowers.
Sowers, thank you. Um, and the topic is noise ordinance. If you wanna go ahead up here and, um, introduce yourself.
Well, my name is Sean Sowers. Um, it was brought to my attention that the noise ordinance here in town, it's pretty vague. And like I had discussions with Ed and I had discussions with Brugman about it. And right now, the ordinance just says that any offensive, any sound that is offensive to the senses. And that really could be anything. I mean, a chainsaw runs at a hundred and ten decibels. That could be offensive to the senses. I would like the council to look at putting a time on that. And I have a couple of other towns that have this ordinance put into theirs. I found Imperials and I found Lincoln's. They're about the two easiest ones to find. Um, I have copies if you guys would like to.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
So the top one's Imperials. And then Lincoln, they actually have a decibel level for theirs. I don't think we need that personally. I would just like to see where we could get like Imperial has from ten to six AM. I think six AM is probably a little too early. Most towns I talked to, they said seven to ten. That's when you can make your noise. That people cannot just be like, well, that's offensive.
Right.
And, you know, with the concrete going on downtown, um, that could be, the city could be in violation of this right now. So I would like to see if the city council would put something in that would give a fire number where somebody could be making noise.
That that that's a fair request.
And you'd be happy with seven to ten.
Oh, yeah, well, that'd be wonderful.
I I would probably like to say like, I don't know how that would work like with Fourth of July, cause it would have to be like an exemption. I I think that's probably why it's.
That was my, yeah.
Why it's been vague because then when you have special celebrations.
Right, right.
Then if you have that seven to ten in there and the week before the Fourth of July, there's no way to enforce that, so.
Right, and like Imperial has in where it has, it has, can be approved by the city administrator to have a special attendance to that. Which I mean, your Fourth of July, you know, the concert for the county fair.
Right, right, or someone's special celebration, you know.
Right, um, there, and I understand why it's vague. But at the same time, like, anybody can really turn you in for anything.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, a lawnmower at ten o'clock in the morning is normal. A lawnmower at ten o'clock at night is not.
Right, right.
Yeah, you know, and I would have a problem in my neighborhood, you know, that's a normal sound in town at ten in the morning. It's not a normal sound at ten o'clock at night.
Exactly, I mean.
Yeah.
So I'd I'd like to see if the city would put a amendment to theirs to put a tightening.
I I think that's a fair request.
Yeah, it takes some time for that process to go.
Yeah, I got to.
Oh, yeah, or 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 it's take.
Right, right. I, through readings and.
Yeah, but I agree.
I mean, I used to work for the city, so I I understand how how long it takes to get something.
I agree the decibel they would have heard.
Right.
Um, especially with like, you know, one neighborhood, it's, you know, eighty decibels is too loud for them. Another neighborhood, and who has to, then that would be a hassle for the sheriff to have to go out and measure that all the time, so.
Right.
Well, very good. Well, I appreciate you coming in and and speaking about this.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think that we've kind of covered it. Maybe you know, sort of talked to a lawyer to see if we can make it, you know, clear but also accommodate those things that, you know, Fourth of July and the fair and that kind of stuff.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Put that on your long list. All right, very good, guys. Do we, do we need a motion or just?
No, I'm not. I mean, it's just.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, the thing we wait for every year.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Oh, let me tell you, riveting, riveting.
Yeah, riveting stuff.
We'll leave it, but I vote yes for.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. You healed up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm only gonna go on out there.
That's not a great one, everybody.
See you guys.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff, thank you very much to come.
Absolutely.
Educate us once again.
Oh, I, yes, very much so. It's hoof notes version for you guys. Uh, that's that's our handout. Um, eighty-five, uh, page proposal, probably not something we want to go through line by line, so I'm gonna get the highlights and the low ones. Yeah, it's, uh, it's exciting stuff. I know insurance is is awesome, right? Right now with all the stuff we have to deal with, that's exactly what you wanted to talk about today. But, um, well, I don't know with a with a lead like that, um, with John Long giving me the, giving me that kinda, that's gonna be tough to live up to. And then John, we're gonna party all night here, is what we're gonna do. There's no, there's no end to any of this. So I am Jeff Skeels with the Hometown Agency. For those who don't know who I am, um, every year our insurance renewal for the City of Grants is in June, okay? Um, we try to put together numbers as fast as we can. Uh, this year, uh, it was about mid-May and we've been trying to find to tune some some ideas and and try to come up with some solutions each year to, uh, to different problems. Um, I sent the, uh, airport ones to, uh, Ed. Ed and Jesse are valuable and great and the employees are great. They help me with stuff. Um, so we make sure we're ensuring the right stuff, make sure our stuff is up to date, we're not missing something, uh, valuations on certain pieces of equipment. Uh, we try to get those fine tuned, uh, so we're not paying for stuff that, uh, quite frankly, yeah, exactly. Uh, and so that's that's kind of a big thing there. And then there's other types of risk management stuff that they allow us, they help us out with. So with that, I am gonna jump right into it. Um, I have my copy here and and like I said, really, the the this is really just kind of nicked down and we're gonna go through, I'm more of a conceptual guy. I don't wanna talk about things as opposed to just eighty-five pages and then we're getting lost halfway through type deal. So the first page is just the cover sheet and on the back of it is the breakdown of what each division is going to cost. That's the annual premium. And, um, I'm gonna go through each one of these sections, cause it's worth explaining and and where does the bulk of the premium come? Obviously, for our exposure is what? These things right here, buildings, stuff that we own, structures across the entire town. But keep in mind, what all what all en- encapsulates the city is we also have an airport, the swimming pool, the golf course. Um, who would have thunk the golf course out there?
Why does that thing get hit?
I did, it's got a big old bullseye on it. You would think, and 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 it is actual hail, it's not just bad golf shots. Uh, but it is, it is actual hail and that has been our big, um, actually our exposure the last couple of years from a claim standpoint on our property. Um, I was looking back at at, uh, at our history and 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 our policies have paid out, I mean, we just, we just dumped an extra check for Dewey Martin, right? Uh, or Dwayne Martin, Martin Building. Um, we just finally got that claim wrapped up. And if you guys remember, that was actually stretched out over two years. It was two separate claims. We got hit with one and then during that got hit again, um, because the, it got hit with hail and then the actual, uh, the pavilion was was damaged due to high winds that we had last year. So we've dropped, uh, our insurance carriers dropped about sixty sixty K out there over the last, um, uh, three years probably. So, um, you're guys' property and that's the thing, you know, you look at this page right here and you're going, what is this, Jeff? Well, you guys have two separate blankets. And there's certain buildings and structures that are on one blanket and and then there's another buildings and structures on another blanket along with personal property. And you'll see those numbers there and if you add those two together, it's nine million, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eight hundred and eighty-four cent, uh, 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 eight hundred and eighty-four dollars even. Last year, that number was eight million, four hundred and sixty-one, two thirty-nine. So it's an increase of one point two three seven million, basically, in in an increase in buildings. Now, you go, Jeff, we didn't add really in buildings. No. And some of you are probably seeing this on your homeowner's insurance right now. The cost of what it's to insure the actual structure is increasing, increasing dramatically. That's a fifteen percent increase, folks. That's what that is. That that's why I said, I mean, I could put all those numbers in and this actually part of your guys' other proposals, like thirty-five pages. So, I mean, that's that's where it's at, because we have each structure and we, and I'm more happy to provide that to the council. I run through it with Jesse and Ed to make sure we have the the buildings and structures on the policy. Um, but we basically have two separate, uh, blankets. One of them has replacement cost, which means in a partial damage situation, um, we we don't depreciate out anything. And that is the larger one. That is the five point seven million. The smaller one is our actual cash value where there would be some depreciation for losses. Um, for example, the, I'll give you, I'll give you an example of how it can affect the claim. The baseball field fence was on an actual cash value basis and basically it was wear and tear that wore it down. The wind didn't finally finish it off. But it was mainly, uh, because there, all those poles were just basically rotted out. Um, now that's that's gonna be added to our blanket now with the new fence and it'll probably be a replacement cost endorsement. I don't see that, cause we'll put it in today's dollars. We put it back on the on the book, on the program. Um, let me, let me give you some quick numbers. The airport, last year, all the buildings out there and personal property, we had two point three five million out there. This year, we now have two point five five million out there. So that's a two hundred thousand dollar increase. We didn't do any improvements on it. That's just the cost of the inflation. I know we were talking about inflation, everything going up. Um, another, the huge one is, uh, we've been working and and Ed and I addressed this last year with Jason Bishop. We had him put together some new numbers on the substation. Um another, the huge one is uh we've been working and and Ed and I addressed this last year with Jason Bishop, we had him put together some new numbers on the substation. We had the substation grossly underinsured, um it was insured at at one point three five million, it is not that to replace that unit on top of there. Anybody guess, anybody wanna guess? What it costs, well, you're Midwest boy, you should know this, right?
One point three million.
One point three million, it's actually two million dollars to replace it, two million bucks is what it's is what it's it costs to replace that substation in today's dollars, so. That's that's a six hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, so that's about half of our increase, and then all the other structures, of course, over the over the uh. So that's where fifteen percent increase comes from, that's just in in our cost of insurance, so. If our cost of insurance per hundred last year was uh fifty cents per hundred. And even if it's fifty cents per hundred this next year, you have to pay more premium, does that make sense? Because your valuations have expanded, no better than your homeowner's policy, if you if you insured it for two hundred thousand last year and now it's two hundred and fifty thousand. You're gonna see an increase in the premium. Um remember the one big kicker too is that we have ten thousand dollar of inhale deductible. Per occurrence, so if that happens, was another reason why we did total out and turning the claim on the building out of the golf course. Before, we weren't subject to that big of an deductible at that time. So, there you go, twenty-five hundred on all the other occurrences, so we we catch fire, it's twenty-five hundred, it's wind inhalants, it's a ten thousand dollar. So, that is our increase um on the building valuation, there was a rate increase on top of that. And as you're punching numbers there, you have fifteen percent increase, overall increase in the property section alone is almost twenty percent. It's a little over twenty percent actually, so. Your entire increase on your policy, it was right there, and so we'll get into hu- hu- uh harder numbers at the end on how that compared to the last couple of years. Any questions? Nope. Next section is inland marine, and this is where I make my joke about that we don't have, we have boats here, that's how much money we take from tax collectors here, that. We have our own private yachts here at the City of Grant, now inland marine is physical damage for non-licensed road uh. E- pieces of equipment, for example, the old Elgin street sweeper that's running around town. Should be covered in gold, it's two hundred thousand dollar uh is what we have insured for on a physical damage type situation. Um the physical damage is covered underneath the inland marine, underneath the the that part of the of the policy. The liability though, when they're up and down the streets, is gonna be on the auto section, so it's a little bit of a different type of twist. Of course, the normal auto, just like your guys' auto insurance, it's covered underneath there. Um but we have we have portable equipment that runs to and from job sites, that doesn't stay on our property. And in order to get physical damage, we have to put it on the inland marine, that's our big ticket item there, we also the new Holland tractor. Um and all of those are subject to a thousand dollar deductible, okay, so that that per occurrence. And and so we get two pieces of damages, we we have a thousand dollars, so. With that being said, that 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 takes care of that, now you see we have fine arts, we do have fine arts in this town, or we we do, and that is our. That's the children reading bronze uh uh statue down by the uh library. So, that's thirty-six dollars a year insured, so it is on here. Electronic data processing, and I'm gonna go to the next section, cause that all kind of ties into each other, if you look at the next page. And tyranny, how is like, how is cyber liability, is there a risk anywhere around for cyber liability, is that something that jumps out at you? Don't feel bad, um.
Is that something we should keep paying for?
If you remember, if you remember this discussion, it was a couple of years ago, and we were all going, do we really have exposures, this stuff, this is the this is the new deal, this is. This is the uh industry hot button, if you will, right now, is cyber liability. And I'm gonna tell you now, looking through this policy, there's not a lot of coverage here, there really isn't, um and it's twelve hundred dollars a year. And then like I said, that's been kind of the as the uh, we have basically their 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 base policy is what we did. And cyber extortion, that's the one you read about on the news, right, that's where they where they steal the information and then they say we're gonna we'll sell it back to you. We've only had twenty-five thousand dollars of coverage there, um and really our 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 response expense and some of those other types of things, we have a hundred thousand. Um the defense liability, not a lot, keep in mind, we do have uh an umbrella behind this, but but these are the, I mean, that doesn't go to cyber extortion or any of those types of things, those are baseline situations, so. Um our like da- our electronic data processing is we have the stuff that runs our water tower, so most things underneath that portion of our inland marine. We have to schedule those items, two things happens there, it's even broader po- it's it's broader perils, and we lowered the deductible to a thousand. That's why we have it on the inland marine, so. But this is a, this is something that's hitting up and down Main Street and 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 other places, um institutional uh situations, I know that in the medical field. There was a a hub hit, um for all the hospitals and about nine critical access hospitals. Fourteen other types of providers included in that, um they tried that, they tried to hack that, you know, um. And and it wasn't even a, it wasn't even they're trying to steal anything, they were just flooding the system trying to make it crash. So I do know that hub was down for thirty-six hours, uh was it last week, something like that, so um those things are out there. So if you come to our meeting, oh, I mean, Zach, that was addressed, so I'm not like I'm like a confidential information, that's quite, that's quite, I was very open in that meeting, so. Um so it is in the area, it does happen to small town, and so I'm glad that we, I'm glad you guys chose to add that, I mean, even if it's as minimum as it is. Um if you guys wanna look at highlights, we can do that down the road, absolutely, so. The next section, more conceptual type stuff is the auto, the things that run on down the road. Um I put it in this page here, just because it's basically gonna lay out the basics here, we have a million dollars worth of liability coverage on our underlying auto policy. Which is not very much when it comes to in this day and age, I take a million dollars, but like I said, in this day and age, when it comes to bodily injury and property damage. Speak to your lawyer, that doesn't go very far, but we do have is an umbrella behind us, and that's excess liability of another four million dollars uh per occurrence. Do we know why we have the four million dollar umbrella? Anyone that have log or jump in? The Nebraska tort act, I'll make sure I say this correctly, the Nebraska tort act uh for political subdivisions. The maximum financial obligation is supposed to be per occurrence of the five million dollars, so that's why you guys have met that requirement. Does that make sense with your limits, as long as it's a covered whole expense, there's your other part, it has to be a covered error that that is in there, so. You guys do have physical damage, but you don't have much for physical damage on vehicles, a lot of our stuff is liability only. Um I saw the I saw the sweet airport van out here with smashed windshield, I I saw that as I was driving by and going. We don't have full coverage on that, so I kept on driving by, but the but I didn't uh I knew that for a fact, we have physical damage. And and the big ticket item is the is of course the garbage truck, it's running up and down, um that is half of your premium almost, it's 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 almost three thousand dollars a year. To ensure that with physical damage, and we have a thousand dollar deductible on that, and the reason why is because it costs so much, it was to be. The other the other item on there is our twenty seventeen freight liner, the the big truck. And then of course we have uh the Sterling sewer, and then we have our pickup, our pickup's only eight hundred dollars a year for full coverage. Full blast on any of these, so there's no deductible or glass, so if it has physical damage, your sweet van, you have to pay for yourself, unfortunately, so. What happened, Zach?
Uh they didn't get the hook hooked back down when they took the battery charger, took charger off it and then.
Flew up and hit it, huh? That's like some scene in movies, right? This is just driving down the road, wham, it looked bad.
It would have been a shocker, I think.
Yeah, I would have been, yeah, well, just think, I don't want to get hurt, alright, there you go, that's the main thing, so entertaining though. So it happens, seen in the movies, it's like, yeah, it happens, alright. General liability, uh this second, um general liability functions here, we have a million dollars per occurrence, but we have a two million dollar pot. Does that make sense, we have, that's our general aggregate amount, it runs from June second to June second every year. And our umbrella goes behind it, um so if we back to that five million dollars in one occurrence, you know, we don't use the umbrella. And then we can get hit with the uh, we we still will have some left over, so say for example, just for example. We do something and we're negligent on the water supply, right, and we get caught, and 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 we get caught, I mean, someone prosecutes us and they win a case. I'm not gonna say that they go win it, I'm just gonna say that's that's how it's it. We, where are you gonna go, where's that, that lands under the normal functions of of yours of your municipality, we're gonna get you a million dollars there, and then the umbrella would be another four. So you get your five million, now, once you use it here, it's kind of gone, does that make sense? So that one first million will be gone, you still have another million to sit you, hopefully get you through the rest of the policy period. Um if you have multiple suits and they and they win the max judgments, you could run out of insurance. And when that happens, these premiums will not be the same, they will be a lot more if we have to go buy more insurance during the policy period. Also, I bet if you exhaust the limits, when you get to the end of the two, um those premiums next year will not be the same either, they will be they will be astronomical. Co- a couple of situations that we've had, um uh related to property damage, uh. Well, now's a good time to talk about back of the sewer. Um that's the one, did I talk about this, like the municipality type things that they hammer on back of the sewer? Here's what happens, back of the sewer. The city has a function they have to perform, right, we have maintenance records, we are doing maintenance issues to try to get the the sewer lines all clean and stuff like that. Cause I've had situations where we clean a line and we back it up into somebody's house. Technically, we're not negligent, we're doing our job, if we didn't clean out that line and then it backed up due to us not staying on regular maintenance type situation. Then you can be overrun yourself for negligence, here's my advice anytime someone calls about a back of the sewer, they should contact their homeowner's carrier first. If there's coverage there, I guarantee you their homeowner's insurance will pay the person who has the homeowner's claim. And if they think the city is negligent somehow, they will subrogate and they will get their money back and and yada, yada, yada. So um even if even if the the main is plugged, and it backs up in somebody's house that way, we're not necessarily negligent, does that make sense? That's where that's where the big misconception happens, and everybody wants to sue the city right away, because because we're negligent, no, technically, we're doing our job. By doing maintenance programs in some of those types of situations, so um we did have a couple of those that got um. Got denied, so I don't see, I've heard any more on on um many. When folks find out they don't have homeowner's insurance that covers back of the sewer, that's where the problem happens, a lot of times, because they don't have any other coverage. And and it's unfortunate deal, and it's an optional coverage with a lot of homeowner's policies. Um there's a couple of carriers that do that do include it, but not very many anymore, used to all be in there, not anymore. So unfortunately, that's that's the situation. Um how is it rated, how do we get a rating based on our population, that's kind of your exposure for a base rate. But then we also have things like a swimming pool, that's a different type of exposure than what other ones have. Um here's where I get asked a lot of times, or I think the concern is related to alcohol out at the golf course. That's all underneath their alcohol license and stuff like that, we have close liquor liability, cause we're not making money off of it, does that make sense? Now, if we were the ones selling or or got profits of any type of situation from that, then we would of course have to have liquor liability also. You guys talked about, this is a great time to talk about li- uh law enforcement liability, right, you guys are just talking about providing your own police force. You talked about payroll, right, the cost, you have to have two guys, cars, where would cars be now, we gotta insure the cars underneath commercial auto, right, your insurance cost's gonna go up. You have to have wa- uh law enforcement liability.
And new building.
That new building, yeah, so, so building would be no structure, correct? All of their equipment, right, all of their stuff that goes with them, that is what, portable? You're talking firearms, you're talking, if they don't own them personally, you're talking about all the other equipment, stuff like, it can land underneath your inland marine. Right, so you start, that's what I like about when some of these people bring up some of this stuff, it's it's a great question. But the true cost is more than, is someone someone will say, well, what, a couple of couple of guys, a hundred thousand payroll, that's just the beginning. We've got costs for property, we've got costs for inland marine, we've got costs for auto, we've got costs for ex- extra liability costs. Um so it's just part of the just part of the calculation, I had villagers have asked me about that too, especially about this time of year when it's time to approve uh contracts. That's that's just about the time to start asking questions like that.
I think we don't have to go down.
Four percent?
Yeah.
So about four percent. Um the next section is our football coverage, and USFL's on now, so it's year round, so I know that's a bad joke. Uh linebacker is actually professionals liability, and and it's basically errors and emissions related to you folks on the council, right? Also related to all your subcommittees underneath there too, that are branches of the City of Grant. Um this is subject to a deductible, your other liability coverage, um I'm just trying to think here for a minute. The tractor does some work and it tears up soap, gotcha, we dump, I don't know, a bunch of, we 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 drain the water tower and ruin a leach field. There's no deductible on that, does that make sense? Underneath here, there's gonna be twenty-five hundred dollars, the first twenty-five hundred dollars of legal fees is gonna be covered here, does that make sense? So, and then we have the million dollars per per limit, the umbrella goes over above this, so we got five million dollars per occurrence there too. But also, I mean, think of all your other subcommittees that are in cemetery board, does something, they get dragged into a lawsuit. Um even retired folks off of this board. Um we've had situations where people have been turned into the advisory thing, there's an investigation. They do, we run through court documents, there's legal defense for that, it's gonna land right here, so. Valuations on stuff, it's a good time, but you got a legal counsel, that's the main thing to pay for, so that's the way you buy insurance, you're transferring that risk. And here's the here's the coverage I've been vopping about the whole time, is the umbrella, we have four million dollar uh each occurrence limit, we have four million dollar aggregate amount. Can look at increasing that if you'd like, um see what the cost would be, those are numbers that I should have brought, a good agent would have brought that with him, like five million dollars or something like that, just with the times where things keep going up. What your coverage is one of those things that goes up also, so.
Is that something that you've been recommending?
Uh we've seen people increase coverage, but here's the thing, by by having the four million dollars, you guys are addressing your obligation of the Nebraska tort act. We're not doing extra on that, but we're we're at least addressing that issue, so something to think about, I mean, I can show figures for that, let you guys take a look at it. It's not bad. No, okay, don't waste my time, it's alright, insurance costs enough, right?
No, it's it's just, once they see how much money they can get out of you, that's usually the next price and they usually, you know, I understand.
Perfect, alright. Moving on, workers' compensation, now what I did do is provide breakdown, and this goes right kind of handy with what you're talking about. Law enforcement liability, you would have a hundred thousand dollars or more payroll, which what they do is they 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 put it under each specific code. And this is this is something that we're working with Jesse every year to audit, so we make sure we put it in the right code, uh box that's that's chargeable. Um if you will go to the backside of that page, I circled something on mine, because I wanna talk about your guys' experience mod. It's the second number down, you see where it says point eight nine experience mod? So what does that mean, well, the standard rating would be twelve thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars, okay? Because the City of Grants has been, uh we haven't had claims related to workers' compensation. Um we actually have a basically eleven percent discount, if that makes sense, um we're we're operating better than the standard municipality. And I will tell you, we did have a claim in twenty eighteen, it was forty-one hundred dollars, even without looking at my other memorize. Uh that was our last claim, not gonna worry at this time, how does that experience mod change, it changes by frequency, so we have a lot of little claims, or we have one severe one. When I brought, when I was brought in to take over this account, oh geez, seems like yesterday, I didn't have that much gray hair, but um. Uh the uh the experience mod here was well over one, in fact, it was closer to one point two five, and a majority of our, well, we had two hundred fifty thousand dollar claim. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you're only collecting ten, twelve grand a year off that, insurance companies, as you are finding out. If you give them a dollar on your personal insurance and they're giving you a buck ten back, they're going to adjust that. And when they go to adjust that, they don't adjust it to a buck twenty, like his comment, and once they find out they get, they're gonna go to two bucks to make up for their ten cents extra, so. So that is um our workers' compensation, good job, guys, that's where we're we're working at a discount. And when we go to our spreadsheet, you'll see that that is one of those situations that because we've controlled the loss history, and we have control over that loss history, we really do. Um now accidents happen, but the majority of your risk management related to employees, these guys have to go to class and schooling and and you know what I mean? And 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 for the most part, we are, we do a good job with our protection, um we have been subject to very many claims. Um the weather knocking down pavilions and and beating the heck out of us with hail, we don't have a lot of control over that, so using those things to adjust. That concludes employers' mutuals contract, your property, your liability, your inland marine, your auto, your liability exposures, that all lands underneath there. Okay, um that policy, um if you're looking for numbers, you can look at this sheet right here, and we like to break them down. And it's on the left-hand side, it's the last year on the left-hand side of the folder. Um that portion of coverage went up six thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars or nine point six percent increase, okay? Nine point six, twenty percent of it is in property. The rest of them are basically flat, and your work comp went down by five and a half. So that's how your rates work, so basically what I'm trying to tell you is that our, the part that's um. Our exposure stayed the same, our inland marine uh equipment, stuff like that, we really didn't add anything there, um. So 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 our 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 cost per hundred stayed the same, you see how that's forty-nine oh five and it's forty-nine oh six? For the most part, those things stayed the same. For the most part, those things stayed the same. Linebacker bumped up a little bit, umbrella bumped up a little bit, but those are six, five percent range. General liability went up two percent. The property, which we added, over a million dollars in increase, fifteen percent increase due to valuation. And, and guys, it is the same. If you had to replace these windows right here, the cost last year versus this year is at least ten percent more. Does that make sense? That's not count labor and stuff. I mean, that, that's what I'm saying. There's where your increase came. Insurance companies, kind of, we've, like the substation. We, we had it at one point, something million. We thought we had plenty of coverage. Started doing some research on that. I said, I just talked to Jayce the other day, and he said, yep, you'd be close to two million dollars if you replace that. So the valuation that they increased on that is probably correct. Unfortunately, we're in catch-up mode with everything else right now. So. The next section is this policy right here, and that is the, that is the airport insurance. Sorry. Liability coverage out there, and hangar keepers and all that, all that coverage. The air, aviation insurance. Oh, is there a pilot in here? Aviation insurance, anybody? Okay. I should specialize in that. Premiums would skyrocket. On average, it's really gonna do twenty percent increase. That's where we're at. Twenty-two percent increase. If we keep the same thing as last year. So I asked a gentleman about terrorism, because I think we bring this up every year. We have terrorism coverage on our, on our underlying policy, and out there, we've always had terrorism coverage. He says, most of the smaller municipalities anymore are, what do you think they're doing? They're cutting costs. They're dropping that coverage. And basically, what the terrorism is, is you get put into the terrorism pool. The feds come in, your policy actually gets, taking your claim to get taken care of by the, by the feds. But that is a fifty million dollar, it's gonna be a fifty million dollar claim is where, is where, is where to get access to the fed's money. So. If the terrorist act happens, then you don't have that endorsement. May not participate. That gets you into their fund if you need to be. So. His answer is, most of the smaller municipalities are looking to cut costs, and that's ten percent of the premium, four hundred and some dollars. So it's up to you guys. The other side sheet here that I put in there, this is one of your different sections. I probably, like, should have went into more detail. But like, for example, your property section has a bunch of other things that are included. And when I say included, for example, we have coverage, if something happens to this building, we weren't able to operate here while it's being rebuilt, we, we, excess rents, you know what I mean? Costs to set up business someplace else. You're gonna have different hookup costs. You're gonna have the electrical bill there. You're gonna have electrical with there. There's, there's incidental costs for that. There's also loss of proceeds or, or, or related to that. And then we have things like fifty thousand dollars worth of unreported buildings and structures coverage. A telephone pole, what we get charged for. It's, it's certain infrastructure type things like that can be related to that. So that's related to that. The next section is the auto. One of the things talking there is, of course, no deductible on glass. I don't know if I've, I've stressed that very well, but there is no deductible to that. Most of your home, most of your regular autos policies, they don't have full glass. They'll fix it without calling, if you have physical damage. We're back, back up. You have physical damage coverage on, so we're talking about, let's talk about the garbage truck. I don't know what it costs to replace the windshield in it. But say something happens to it, and it's cracked, and we need to have it replaced. We have a thousand dollar comprehensive deductible. With this endorsement, we are, we're not subject to the deductible. Does that make sense? So it allows us to carry higher deductibles for those types of claims. We did have an auto claim right before renewal last year. You guys remember that? Like a week, the week of when I came here, I think, we, we ran into a parked car with a garbage truck. So that was seventeen hundred dollar boom right before. So it happens. And that's because you buy insurance, though, right? We're transferring risk. And then underneath the liability section, it's got, it's got broader terms related to named insures and stuff like that. So it's just included in the municipality broadening coverage. So, the numbers are the numbers. EMC has a program where they take all of the, all of the villages, the cities, municipality-related things, they put them together in what they call a safety group. And we delivered a check down here. In the past, that check was rather healthy. This last year, this year, it's only twenty-one hundred dollars. That's right, twenty-one hundred bucks. Last year, it was twelve thousand six hundred. Year before that, it was ninety-eight hundred. Year before that, it was eighty-two hundred. Year before that, it was sixty-eight hundred, and it was forty-four hundred the year before that. So over the last six years, EMC has kicked the dividend back to the City of Grant totaling forty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents. So how does that work? Well, what they do is they take all of the municipalities, they put them together in one big safety group, and it runs a three-year loss history. And so then after, it takes all the premiums in there, and then minus all the, all the losses paid out, and if there's a surplus, that gets kicked back in the form of a dividend. Well, last year, that safety group suffered an over one million dollars worth of losses, one point zero four two in losses. Year before that, though, it was one point two four seven in profit, and year before that, it was two hundred thirty-eight thousand in profit. So you take the three-year average, it's still, it was still profitable, and that's why it was a smaller dividend. What dropped off, though, was the year before that. Four years before that, was one point two million dollars. So that's why we were at twenty-three and a half percent dividend last year. Twenty-one the year before that. We had two really good years there, right? Pretty much next to each other. One of them fell off, and we replaced it with, instead of a one point two million dollar gain, we had one million dollar loss as the group was told. So, but they paid a dividend twenty out of the last twenty-six years. From twenty fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, there weren't, but then there was a stretch there of about eight more years in a row. So. As of right now, and I can already pretty much tell you this, April twenty-second last year was not profitable for the state of Nebraska. Does anybody remember what happened? That's when we had the fires down by LC, but the entire state got bombed with that wind that went all the way across the state. Caused a ton of structure damage. And then there was just the assorted hails at that end of the state, along with high winds. Good thing we're not talking about pivot coverage right now, right, Marlon. That industry is being, is being ravished with claims. So after the last couple of years in pivot. So. Unfortunately, right now, Nebraska, and really, if you watch the news, it's, it's been kind of tough. And I'm not making excuses, but the increases are the increases. We've done pretty much everything we can do. Our value of our buildings are our value of our buildings. We have a swimming pool we added in the last couple of years. We've added buildings. You know, we've done improvements. So our property premium has skyrocketed. So is our coverage. I mean, you're at ten million dollars like you're basically. So worth, worth a property. Water tower, about two hundred thousand, too.
And we want that covered.
Yeah, we do.
I don't like my water.
What can Jeff Skeel's hometown agency crew do better for the City of Grant?
Thomas, what it costs replacing the entire airport.
Oh, good question. I had that coverage, actually. That's what I'm gonna have. Hold on. Because I had the, the airports. Come on, Jeff. Bear with me. My copy. It's on my copy. There we go. Coverage out at the airport. Great question. Two point, yup. Two point five, four nine three four one million.
Replaced the entire airport.
Yup.
So, so if we lost the entire airport terrorism, then we didn't qualify for the federal fifty million.
No, no.
Okay. About a long shot.
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying. It's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it was two point three five seven. That's what I'm saying. It added a hundred ninety thousand dollars of coverage this last year. Just because of the cost of metal and cost of everything out there. That's what I'm saying.
No, I get the cost, but just we have to lose an airport, we have to lose an airport. What?
The federal.
How many times?
Yeah.
Twenty times? Twenty times per occurrence? Yes, with it. And then what are they recommending for that terrorism, cyber terrorism, where twenty-five thousand? What are you guys recommending for that?
I, you know, it's, it sounds bad. It's such a new coverage, even to me. I have not worked much with it. We should kind of put on the recommendations and kind of go from there. So a hundred thousand is a million.
We don't, we don't actually collect any personal information, because that was close to us, Jesse. Something our building is from Midwest.
Okay.
So technically, they can remember Midwest's policy.
Gotcha.
It's gonna be more pale or something like that potentially.
What if they come in and, can they come in and take control of the water towers or the computer system?
Not right now, because it's not connected into the internet.
Not those stations, not anything like that? We can override those manually? Okay. That's the type of stuff that I worry about.
So it's more of their, their, in some sense, that if, it probably took more time or something happened or.
Downtime with administrative costs, or, or they, or they crashed the system, we gotta replace the system. You know, those types of things. But actually, from a bodily injury or property damage of gathering personal, private information, doesn't sound like we have much of an exposure there.
Okay. Never get rid of manual overrides, apparently, is what I was wondering.
Yeah, I, well, I was talking, you know, from the, from the health provider standpoint, that's what they were about, in fact, too. Was actually going back to file, you know, they were out thirty-six hours, and they're gonna start to figure out how they were going to physically do it again. Well, I'm gonna say both, guys. Now, in my situation, we're paperless. I know it doesn't look like it, but we are. We're paperless. And so we have electronic files that are stored offsite, backed up, the whole night there. Can it be hacked? Yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, anything, you know? So like you said, if, if, if our internet goes down, hometown agency, to be honest with you, I, we wouldn't be able, because we have to get it off the website, to print a form now, right? Because we haven't done it. So, so we're stuck with eight hundred members calling in physically. They have to do claims that way, if it was, or changes, or whatever. Thank God for cell phone, but I guess of that, I don't know. I don't know. Because who knows? I guess, I don't know. We're all susceptible to it now. Do not get rid of the manual. Didn't we used to have, was that here, we used to have the backup tractor to run the water tower? Everything goes?
On the one wow.
Before we had the generator?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I remember that conversation. We'd be talking about, what happens if the water tower, you know, the power goes down, and they, they had a backup tractor they built in there to get the fire back up. That's why adding the generator, right, there's another improvement in the last, what, five, six years that we've added. So, right, there's another fifty thousand dollars worth of damage. So those types of deals. So we appreciate your business. If you keep it local, is anything going to be better? Let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for doing.
That's pretty good.
I did go on, but then I.
No, I thought we just booked rights.
It was wrong.
I was a non-novice. Do we need, they should have a motion to, of the insurance. I take action on presentation by hometown agency for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four insurance includes the pit.
Does Mary decide something?
Do I need to sign anything?
None of that at all.
Okay.
Sorry.
Carrie, move. We accept the hometown agency for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four insurance needs. And Sam, second any discussion. Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion carried. Alright, bills and claims. Did you all have a chance to look at bills and claims? Alright.
I move to pay bills and claims in amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Sam moved, and Carrie seconded. We accept bills and claims in amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Any discussion? Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion carried. We are adjourned at seven fifty-eight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm gonna try to leave the traffic.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. I appreciate it. Good, good speaking up.